Is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council regular meeting to be held at 4:30 on Monday, December the 7th, 2015, at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, regarding the item of business according to the agenda listed below. Would y'all stand with us as Pastor Bridges from the Friends Church has an invocation, and then we'll have the pledge to the flag?
Greetings to all of you, and just gives my heart joy to see you guys laughing and joking with each other this afternoon. So often, I'm not going to preach a long sermon, okay? But so often, as we all know, there's such bitterness and conflict within the people that are making decisions in our country, and it just made me smile to see you all laughing at each other today. So greetings to you and to the rest of you, too. Let's pray together. Lord, we're thankful for the founding mothers and fathers of this city that so long ago came to this place in hopes to create a community where there would be justice, where there would be rightness, where things would be whole, and that people could live at peace with one another. And we're thankful for all those who have gone before us that have worked toward those same goals, and those of us in this room this afternoon are gathered with that same purpose, the purpose of making things right in Friendswood, Texas. And so I pray that your blessing upon the decision-makers this evening, that you grant them wisdom and knowledge to know what's best, and then give them courage to do it. For the rest of us that are here this evening, may what we give and receive to one another, what we offer in words and listening both, be honoring of one another and the fact that you've made us all in your image. We're grateful to be here today for this purpose, and we pray for your blessing upon us in Christ's name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a breathing justice of all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Item number four on the agenda is communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meeting Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer to this item, the council may refer this item to the city manager, or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen's comment period. And I don't see any cards, so we'll move on. Item five is our work session. Item A is regarding schedule of events and plan of finance for the city's series 2016 bonds.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may recall last month, we had a discussion, a brief discussion regarding the issuance of debt in calendar year 2016, associated, one, with the bond program that was approved in 2013, two, associated with some water and sewer projects that are coming down the Pike, and then an additional item related to a refunding issuance. At last month's meeting, you gave us the direction to look at the length of terms associated with those projects. Later this evening, Cindy and our financial advisor, John Robuck, will be up to answer those questions. Real quick, before we get into that discussion, I wanted to go over some of the projects that this money's being issued for. First and foremost, with relation to the 2013 bond program, we had initially planned on tackling the construction of Fire Station 1 behind Public Safety Building and the expansion of Fire Station 4 in 2017. Due to the escalation of construction prices, we moved that construction up a year, and the intent was to start construction in 2016, and that would have been the issuance of 6.1 million in January. That said, we're starting to close on our round one of parks projects, and we're getting to a point where we need to go ahead and issue the second round of debt associated with the parks component of the 2013 bond program. Originally, we had held off in wanting to tackle it at this time, simply to keep the overall issuance below 10 million and maintain what's known as bank-qualified debt issuance. However, with the money we're issuing for the Black Hawk Third Clarifier, we're going to exceed that 10 million anyway, so we looked at our scheduling of projects and felt that we should and can tackle the second round of parks projects in 2016 and complete them a year earlier. Associated with that, we borrowed some around $2 with the parks to purchase new parkland behind Friendswood Community Church, so we changed the schedule up midstream. So, as you know, we're currently under construction round one for the sports park. We're under design and soon to be under construction with the trail system to Stevenson, connecting Old City with Stevenson Park. We did a lot of lighting at Centennial Park, as well as a few other parks projects. The moving round $2 up from parks will allow us to, one, complete Lake Friendswood, will allow us to complete the improvements at Old City Park, will allow us to tackle the lighting that was planned for Renwick Park, and start tackling Baker Road. So what I'm here before you tonight to ask for some guidance on is to whether or not y'all want to go ahead and issue the remaining 2.7 million roughly that's available for the parks bond, or you would rather just do the 600,000 or 700,000 above the 2 million and then wait and do a third issuance. It makes no material difference. From a debt issuance standpoint, it does impact those scheduling and our ability to finish out some of these projects. Associated with the parks project, you know, the sports park is coming to a close. We are quite a bit over what we originally projected. However, we have expanded the scope of that project quite a bit so that we can provide a first-class softball facility for our girls' softball program. We're building four youth fields instead of two. We're building two restrooms instead of one. We're building two concession stands instead of two, or instead of one. So the scope has expanded quite a bit. On the water sewer side, we're tackling the Third Clarifier at the Black Hawk wastewater treatment plant, and we're completely reconstructing lift station 23, I believe it is, known as Crazy Horse, off of FM 518. And I'll let Mayor Pro Tem Hill let you explain where it got its name. Joking.
It was named in the last century, Mr. Stone. It was actually, it was named after a liquor store and a beer joint that was there, and it's kind of unique that such a thing existed in Friendswood back then, but that's where it got its name.
Yes, sir. Before John gets up here to explain the length of terms associated with that, I would like to get some consensus from council, whether or not we issue the full 2.6 that's remaining and go ahead and knock out the parks bond projects three years ahead of schedule, or if you'd want to break it up into two and wait.
Carl?
Is available to, you got a hole in the schedule available to do this?
Yes, and it's part of a cash flow and timing as well. Because of all the resources that went towards the sports park, some of the original projects, such as Lake Friendswood that we had promised to get done in round one, financially, we're not able to, or the basketball pavilion, because we only issued so much money for round one. So this also allows us to complete those round one projects that we had bumped to round two to complete round one.
But it doesn't create any resource problems for you whatsoever?
No, sir.
Okay.
I would just say I'm in favor of going ahead.
Councilman McGinnis?
I'm in favor of going ahead as well.
I'm in favor, and if you remember, when we created this plan, we looked at a five, seven, and 10-year option, and we went with the seven as a sweet spot, but we always said if we need to accelerate, we can accelerate, if we need to slow down, based on how, because we weren't sure at that point how much the staff's time this is going to take, how many of these projects we're going to get right out of the chute, and so on, and I think this is why we gave some flexibility. I have a question on, you say going after the 2.67. It's not really pulling that forward, that was already part of our round two bond issuance.
It was part of round two. We're pulling it up from 2017 to 2016.
Oh, just pulling it a year sooner?
Yes, sir.
All right. But then we still have another round for the...
We have another round of streets left to complete, which would be the Black Hawk and Boulevard and Woodlawn.
Okay, that's clarifying there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Rogge?
Yeah, I'm in favor, too. I was one of the ones that voted for the five-year plan back then, so I like seeing it moved up, so I'm good with it.
Okay.
I concur, Mo, I think you, yeah, go ahead.
I know the 10 million mark, can you just explain again, what's special about that as far as issuing debt?
If you maintain less than 10 million in debt issuance in a given calendar year, it's known as bank-qualified debt, it's tax-exempt bonds, we're going to be above the 10 million threshold regardless. Between the 6.1 that's being issued for the fire station, and then the 3.5 roughly for the Third Clarifier, Black Hawk, those issuance costs combined will push us over the 10 million.
You typically would get a slightly better interest rate by staying below, that's the main issue, and John can, and before Marod leaves, go ahead and answer John that if you will, but I wanted to ask.
It's a tax designation, and what it allows is, it allows banks, local banks, to bid on these bonds. They have a threshold of how many bonds they can invest in, and having a bank-qualified designation actually brings more buyers into the market to buy the bonds, which, you know, more supply lowers the rate. Right now, in this day and age, rates are so low, that spread between bank-qualified and non-bank qualified obviously fluctuates daily like the market does. It's about 20 basis points difference, you know, on a 30-year yield curve, so it's difference, but it's not a big difference. And, you know, if you have projects and a refund, you're going to save money anyway, so it's probably, you know, basically offsets each other, so.
The other... Mo, are you prepared to talk about, the other issue that we'll be looking for, decision from council or direction from council, is the length of the bonds.
Correct.
And we're not a little bit different, we're very different from a household, so to speak, where we build a house, and the sooner we get it paid off, the more we save in debt. We are the same in that regard, except that we're continually building new households, if you will. So I was going to ask Mo if he was prepared to...
Yes, sir.
Mention a few of the upcoming projects or in the next five years, things that are still on the list that aren't a part of this.
Yes, sir. You may recall in early 2014, we adopted the CIP manual that outlined our five-year window. The projects that were included in that five-year window were such as Whispering Pines Expansion, Friendswood Link Road, the projects from the 2013 bond program, the streets, the parks, et cetera, the fire stations and the library. Beyond five years in the manual, we have additional projects that will be coming to fruition as we complete these projects, and so there will be additional debt needed and additional bond programs tackled. Those projects include such as the second phase of the Public Safety Building. They include replacing Fire Station 2 in the southern reaches of Friendswood. They include replacing the Public Works Building or renovating it. They include the Parks Building. We did purchase some property next to Stevenson Park, but here in a couple of years, we will have to renovate it from a residential structure to a office complex. On top of that, we still have our streets. We're making a very small dent in rehabbing some of these streets with our annual maintenance budget plus the contract you're going to issue tonight, but we continually have a list, a laundry list of streets that are going to need to be rehabbed and reconstructed completely. So there are always a continual list of projects that are coming down the Pike, and we do plan on bringing to you early, or the first quarter of 2016, an update to the CIP manual now that some of these five-year projects are coming off the list.
My point in asking Mo to refresh everyone's memory about that is simply that it's not that we have a short list, and if we bite the bullet, we'll get it all done in a short period of time. We're going to be issuing debt into the future, and it's a matter of hitting the sweet spot on the length of the bonds, as far as the impact on the tax rate and that kind of thing.
Roger, we had talked about 10, 15, and 20 years, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
If I remember right, I thought that my personal preference was 15 because it had less impact on the tax rate, and yet it still saved some interest, but other council members, you have...
And John will go through a few of those advantages and disadvantages with you all this evening.
I've got it. Do y'all have this presentation in your packet? Okay, do y'all want another copy or just leave them here? You're good? It's on your screen, because I know the print's very small, so maybe it'd be better to have a hard copy in front of you. We, based on last meeting, we ran some scenarios based on a 10, 15, and 20-year debt structure, so you could kind of get a comparison of all three of those based on the different amounts. I will tell you, based on your recommendation about two minutes ago, the $8,770,500 is what we're going to be looking to issue in GO bonds, based on the parks and the fire station. So that's in the middle, and I'll direct you to those pages when we get there. But if we turn to the first page, Bond Buyer Index, again, this is a snapshot of the bond market as of last Thursday. The blue line is the General Obligation Index, and the red line is the Revenue Index. We do have an update. Last Thursday, I sent this to the city, I think on Monday or Tuesday of last week, so they get it to your packet, but on Thursday, the new rates came out, and the Revenue Index is now at a 3.98 percent. All-time low is at 4.06, so we're about eight basis points above the all-time low on the Revenue Index. And the General Obligation Index is currently at a 3.57 percent, so that's about 30 basis points, or 0.30 percent off of all-time low. So we're in a great environment to sell bonds, get a great rate for the city with your rating, but that's where the market is right now. Can't promise that in a couple of weeks, but that's where it is right now. As we discussed last week, I want to kind of knock out the refundings, I think we all agree the refunding makes sense to do, save money for the city. We're looking to refund the outstanding portions of the 2006 water and sewer bond issue to potentially save about 1.6 million in interest cost for the city. And then on page three, here's a summary of the different scenarios we ran. We looked at 6.1 million dollars, the 8.7 million dollars, and the 6.7 million dollars, again, based on what y'all decided a couple of minutes ago. We focused on the middle two columns. We ran them, the 20-year debt structure, 15, and a 10-year debt structure, and the differences between those three structures are highlighted there in yellow on basically the fifth column from the left. If, the difference between a 15- and 20-year debt structure is about $1,163,000 in saved interest cost. Difference between a 20-year and a 10-year is about $3.4 million. Now, again, that savings, you know, is over the life of the bonds, and what that equates to the tax rate is down below that in the next group of rows. For a 20-year debt structure, the tax rate increase would go, your tax rate would go up 1.15 cents. You're, put that in perspective, your current INS tax rate is 7.15 cents, so going up 1.15 cents for 20-year structure, your maximum tax rate would be 8.3 cents. For a 15-year debt structure, your tax rate would go up 1.35 cents, or for a maximum tax rate of 8.5 cents. And then for a 10-year debt structure, it'd go up 3.2 cents, which would have a maximum tax rate of 10.35 cents. Kind of put that in better perspective, what we told the taxpayers when we passed the 2013 bond election, the maximum tax rate would be 11.2 cents. And if you remember, those bonds were run on a 25-year debt structure, sold in 15, 17, and 19, we're escalating, obviously, the 16 sale to 15, and/or the 17 sale to 16, excuse me, and I think we can issue a portion of this and keep well below this, 11.2, by doing the 20- or 15-year debt. I think the 10-year's probably biting off a little too much, in my opinion, but I think the 15 would make sense if that's something y'all want to do. And then the detail for those three scenarios starts on page seven. Lot of numbers on this page, is why I gave the handout, but it takes into consideration the results, potential results of the refunding, and also this bond issuance of $8.7 million. And you'll notice the tax rate would go up, and actually, if you return to page eight, I think it's the 15, yeah, to page eight's the 15-year structure, you'll see that boxed yellow column there, about five rows over from the left, or columns over from the left, that's your maximum tax rate, 8.5 cents, and that's for two years, and then it drops based on the growth and the value of the city. And we've made some conservative assumptions on these tax rate models. We're assuming the city's values will grow 3% for four years, 2% for four years, and then 1% for four years after that, then no growth after that. I know there's a lot of numbers on here, I can walk through in detail, but it's, I might be here a while, but if y'all had a chance to review this in the packets before this, okay. Do y'all have any questions on the tax rate model?
So just to clarify, that I understood you said, under any scenario, we would still stay below the 11.2 cents?
Yes, sir. Now, we don't have factored into the remaining authorization, which would be, and I'm not sure when we'd sell that remaining authorization.
We have another five and a half minutes.
And what's the timing on that?
2017.
2017, okay, so next year. But even with that, you're... Yeah, I think we're well within, I mean, based on these growth projections, I think we, in the original model, we ran a 13, we used very conservative assessed valuation growth, and we also used very conservative interest rate projections. So I think we'll be fine. Unless values don't go up, then we're all in trouble.
And this 13, 14, 15 includes refunding the 2006, or refinancing the 2006?
I'm sorry, the 13?
The 13 million, 145,000, that's what we're going to go out for?
Actually, we're going to go out for more than that 13, it's going to be 8 million plus the original, I should have it right here, sorry. That'd be 13 plus 11, so it'd be 23, oh, 24 million, excuse me, bond for the General Obligation Refunding Bonds, will the total amount will be approximately. Is that what you're asking, sir?
I was trying to grab what's the total?
Yeah, the bond amount would be 8 million, it's going to be 8 million plus 11, so it'd be 19 million on the General Obligation, and 5 million, almost 5.6 million on the water and sewer side.
So on page two, the 13 million, 145,000, is that what's being refunded on the 2006?
That's what's being refunded. Yes, sir.
And then rolled into the new?
New, yes, yes, but based on current market rates, we'll only have to issue about a little over 11 million, almost $12 million to refund that because of premium.
Got you.
And then if you'll turn to page 13, we look at the water and sewer based on a 10, 15, and 20-year structure. Now, from a water rate standpoint, Cindy, do you have the effects, and we'll do the water rate structure for the 10, 15, 20-year?
We don't have, they're still working on our rate study, but we did get a number from the consultant, and she said that a dollar on the volume metric rate, not on the base, but the amount above the base, would generate $1.5 million in revenue. So while we don't have the detail back, we do have at least a ballpark number to work with.
And so that being said, we had a conference call last week with Roger, Mo, and Cindy, and we talked about water and sewer projects and how long they're typically issued for. And the short answer is, most times they're issued for the average life of the project, whatever the life of the project is, usually you go to about that point. So everybody's using the system, once it's in place, you know, pays for it, if you will. But that being said, you know, we issued 20, 25, we've done 15 before, so it's really up to you guys what you want to do for the water sewer side, if you want to do 15, 20. Again, I think 10 years would probably have a larger impact on your rate study than a 15- or 20-year debt structure, but...
Mo, are we going to be faced with more problems or more investments over at the water sewer plant?
Yes, sir. Once the Third Clarifier goes online, we'll be able to evaluate and rehab the existing two clarifiers that are there, which are 35 years old, so there will be additional projects at the wastewater treatment plant. We have a sizable project coming down the Pike with the southeast water purification plant, and that's the 42-inch water line that's anywhere estimated our share for about $5 to $7 million. And that does, those two projects alone are sizable as they are, do not account for lift stations throughout town that need to be replaced, and water lines and sewer lines that need to be rehabbed and replaced. These are what we typically refer to as depreciating assets. They're great assets to have, but they do have a finite amount of time that they'll be in existence, and so we're always, just like our streets, going to have to replace and rehab as they wear out.
Any more comments?
So thank you for putting this document together. Of course, when I look at the page four with the comparison structures, that boils it all down for me, that if we did want to be a bit aggressive with our debt and issue these for a 10-year period, you know, at the end of that 10 years, that's $3.4 million that we would be saving the citizens. And that, to me, gives freedom and other options to a future council at that time. You know, if we could be a bit more aggressive in trying to retire our debt, that's my perspective on it. Thank you.
Do, I'm sorry, Steve, go ahead. No, I was just going to ask Roger if he had any recommendations.
Well, the question first, is there a problem with having different lives from the water and sewer and the other, two different issues?
Two separate issues, yes, sir.
It all, in my mind, it all boils down to what you can swallow, and it's the taxpayers that are paying the rates today, you know, to accomplish the savings 10 years, over 10 years. So there's that, there's the issue of, we've, you've heard it said before, generational equity, having people pay for what they use. 20 years from now, and I'm not saying it ought to be 20-year debt, but 20 years from now, somebody is still going to be using this clarifier, somebody will be using the streets, and there's a logic to having them pay for what they use, and having that share as opposed to today's citizens paying for it in a much, much shorter period of time. There is a sweet spot, and I understand and appreciate the desire to save interest as much as possible, but debt is something that is going to be a part of our future. We're going to be continually looking at our budget and trying to make it as lean as possible, but we're always struggling, if you will, to try to meet current obligations and pay for debt at the same time, so it's, there's no one perfect answer, but I think I heard John mention that 10's a little aggressive, and I would agree with that, quite frankly.
The savings on 10 years, 3.5 billion basically, but we still save 1.16 on 10, so actually, we would be only saving 2.5 million more, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct, if you're between 10 and 15.
Anybody else have comments? I know that they're looking for direction. Go ahead, Councilman.
You know, to me, you know, we're at historic lows for the bonds, and that's the time to, you know, to be aggressive, like you said, because the rate is down, but I have a question. You know, whatever's driving the bond market to these all-time lows, what do you think the future of that is? Are we at a stable low? I mean, and not asking you to predict...
No, I understand, I get this question all the time, and I wish I knew the answer. I will tell you that there is talk that in December, the Fed's going to raise short-term rates. I have a feeling the market has a little bit of that built into it currently. How much, I don't know, and how fast the Fed will, they'll come back and first year and do it again, you know, who knows? I said last year, I thought rates were going to go up this year because of just, you can't keep rates low this long, but they've got to go up sometime. I mean, we've got too much debt nationally, and the economy's starting to pick up again, so you've got to believe rates are going to go up a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, having, I actually agree with you. Boy, I'll tell you, it's tempting to go with the 10-year here with you got such low rates. You know, we may never see them again. I mean, it's hard to believe they could go much lower without giving the money away, so. Yeah, so we're faced with this conundrum, we can be aggressive, we got low rates, we doubt they're going to go a heck of a lot lower, and we save ourselves a lot of money over time. On the other hand, we end up with almost doubling, doubling the amount of money that we're going to have to pick up in the tax rate.
There is a concern, I mean, there is a note, we are going to issue debt again in 2017 for the Black Hawk Boulevard project and the Woodlawn project, and in the next few years, aside from the projects we do know about, there may be some unforeseen projects coming about in terms of failures in our system. And if we do go with the lower-term note, we're going to be in a bit of a pinch if we have to issue additional debt, that's going to really impact our rate payers, both on utility side plus the tax rate.
Yeah, I'm aware that we got to keep an eye... Yeah, I'm aware that we got to keep an eye on that 11 cent cap that we're under.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, in my, are we just giving opinions here, are we still discussing?
Yeah, well, I think everybody ought to comment before we make our final decision.
Yeah, if I still got the floor, I think, hate to split the baby, but I think I'd go with the 15-year.
And I feel similar, it's, Friendswood is different, and I think for us, you know, one of the things I like our differences to be is that we're a debt-free city. But it's hard, hard to get the city out of debt in one meeting, and you got to look at, you know, how quickly, how can we best get our citizens out of debt without putting too much pain on them? And looking at these, and I think we're already, most places are looking at 25-year bonds, we're already looking at, our longest being 20. And you look at the 15-year bond, it's, it's, you're cutting off five years, you're saving almost, you know, a little over a million dollars. And it's, it's, it's minimal pain to the citizens from a tax increase perspective to do that. I'd love to, you know, for this to be retired 10 years, but it's, you know, like you were saying, it's a double on the tax increase, and the citizen's going to, they're going to feel that, and it's going to be painful. But to me, as a council, I think, I love the vision of getting out of debt, but I think the best way to get out of debt is starting to accumulate money down the road, capital, accumulate capital improvement money so that we can pay for things out of pocket as they come up, rather than trying to finance it. Because when they hit us at the time, that's not the time to be trying to figure out how we're going to pay for it, because it's, usually the only option is, is debt. So I, that long tirade, I'm, I'm leaning towards the 15-year.
Yeah, well, I, I agree with both of you guys on, on the, on the terms, I think the 15-year makes the most sense. Though, I would disagree with you on, on how aggressive with the interest rate. When interest rates are low, that's when you want to be less aggressive, because it doesn't cost you as much over time. If interest rates are exorbitantly high, like they have been back in the 70s or whatever, that's when you got to get really aggressive, because the interest will kill you the longer you lengthen that term. So I think 15 is a good medium. I think it doesn't hamstring the citizens so much that, that they can't afford, you know, other projects that will certainly come up over the next 15 years. The debt burden, as far as interest is concerned, is not significant enough to make that much of a change. So I think the 15-year plan for me is, is, you know, where I would be looking to issue.
Anybody else? Carl?
My preference would be the 10-year, and again, to Councilman Enoch's comment, trying to accumulate some cash to save money for future projects. I think while, in theory, it's not a bad idea, what we're, what we're essentially doing here is borrowing money for, over the course of five years, so that we can have money sitting in the bank, and I, you know, it's just not something I ordinarily want to be doing. So, rates are low, you can afford to pay it off quicker. Given the scenario Councilman Scott mentioned, it'd be, it's very, very expensive to try to pay down debt at those higher rates. It's, it's very inexpensive to do it now. I just don't like carrying the debt. I'd, I think you have an opportunity to pay it off quickly, and I would, I would do it. I don't think you're going to see this opportunity again.
You want to say anything else?
Councilman Enoch, I agree, I mean, I would love to see Friendswood as a debt-free city. Councilman Hill has told me many times, Doc, that's probably not going to happen, because we don't have 25 Walmarts in the city. We don't have that advantage. And frankly, when there's a website transparency, Texas, I forget what it's called, but you can compare city to city and school district to school district. Friendswood is already ahead of the curve with, with debt. So for all the citizens listening tonight, don't think that we're trying to catch up. This is just kind of an attitude or a strategic posture. Is it prudent to try to retire this debt earlier? And as I said before, from my perspective, it's a gift to a future council that says, you know, there's 3.5 million dollars that we don't have to pay off, that gives us more options with the other bond issuances that will come in that timeframe. Or, as Councilman Enoch says, you know, then we might be in a position to fund things directly. So I agree with my colleagues, 15 years might be the sweet spot. I still would prefer to, I would urge you to consider a 10-year posture. And then maybe we ought to have a workshop with the council about, you know, our debt strategy, if we want to have a plan to get more aggressive, but thank you. Mayor Protim?
Well, I, I think the 15 is the best. You know, bear in mind, 15 years is half of what most cities do. And like Doc said, we, we do a great job here in Friendswood, is controlling debt and delivering a good product for what the citizens pay. One other thing that I'm concerned is when we got the citizens to pass the bonds, we told them that we weren't going to have a huge tax increase. And so I think it's imperative that we keep our word to the citizens, and this will help do that. So we got four for 15, five for 15, and one for 10, is that?
Two for 10.
Two for 10, two for 10, okay, well, we still have four for 15, so that will be our recommendation.
On the water and sewer side, Cindy mentioned a dollar per 1.5 million dollars of debt service, is that correct?
Do you all want to do the water and sewer for 20-year, 15, or 10?
Because that, that is concerning to me, if it, trying to compress that into 15, that, that rate impact, I think is going to be significant. Cindy, can you help with that, or?
Yes, and, and that's on the volume metric rate, right, Katina? Not on the base, so that's even a bigger hit, because if it's the base, it's not increasing the more you use. So that, that's, that's a lot of rate.
And these improvements should last 30 years, but in the next 10 years, there's going to be more improvements come along. So I don't know, that's why we need to discuss it and decide which we think is best.
Yes, and these are big projects, but they always represent a small fraction of our overall system when it comes to utility. So tackling it in, in 10 or 15 years sounds like a great idea, but there will be other projects that are going to be lumped on, and that'll really hurt our utility rate payers.
That's a clarifying question. So on page three, that's just looking at the new debt we're going to be taking on.
This is purely general obligation debt.
It's not the 13, 14, 5 that we're going to, that we are refinancing.
No, this, well, this, no, that includes this, but this is just GO. We're talking about the water and sewer, which is not even included.
There's got to be an easier way to, to lay all this out, we just, it's like we keep jumping around between things.
There's nine scenarios, three for each amount, so kind of tackle one at a time, I apologize.
Well, the water and sewer is paid by what people pay on their water rates.
Yes, sir.
And the other is what people pay on their taxes. So they're two separate revenue streams.
And so what we just talked about on the 10, 15, and 20 was just on the general obligation side for the 2013 bond. Where's the paper for what you're talking about now?
Page, page 13, 14, and 15. And again, because the other scenarios all are based on a tax rate, generating enough revenue to cover the debt service requirements. The water sewer is purely based on the water rates, and that's done by water rate studies. So we didn't have the same comparison we could do for the water sewer as we do for the general obligation side. So the debt service difference between the three are listed on page 13, 14, and 15, I did not do a summary, I apologize.
And then the 2006 bond that we're retiring, what is that currently financed over?
It's, well, it was financed, oh, gosh, issue '06, and it goes out till 30, let's see here.
2030, does it?
30, so it basically is 25-year debt.
Councilman Rocky?
I, I have to agree with what was said earlier, I'm fairly familiar with water treatment. The clarifier that we're buying this year is going to last 30-plus years, probably 40. And there is probably other projects down the road that we're going to have to deal with in terms of expansion. So I, I, I think it's a wiser case here, just pushing the timeline out on this. You know, it, it mitigates the impact on the water bills, they do last longer, but in 20 years, people will still be using that clarifier guaranteed. So, you know, it's kind of a, there's an element of fairness there, instead of having, having, having it pushed up forward to say that. So that's my opinion on that, I'd go with the 20.
Cindy, would you clarify, any changes to the water and sewer debt would fall to the overage volume, not the base rate?
It's all in there together. When we determine the rate, we start with, like we do on the tax side too, we determine what we need to pay our debt, and then we do operations, because that's our obligation first. So it's really not that this piece would go here, it's all, it's all together, but we take care of the debt first.
Do we have the option to change the base rate if we decided to go instead of 20 to 15 years on the water and sewer? Or is it always limited to that overage?
We've tried to keep it so that the base covers the, the minimum operations. But then, there's any number of variances that we can put into the rate structure. Whereas last time we retained, so we have an ascending rate. So it all depends on how we want her to, to plug in the numbers to see the best way. We've tried to keep the base lower because of the minimum users, the people that, single family or very small households, older people that may use less to keep that minimum bill lower. And, and if you are a user, then you pay more. That's kind of been the philosophy we've used.
Thank you.
There are some variables that nobody can predict. For instance, it's been raining this year, so I can assure you revenues are down. And when we had the drought, we sold a lot of water, but you can't predict what it's going to be. But I know that traditionally, we have kept our water bills very reasonable compared to neighboring cities. And I'm right now for a slight increase, if that's what it's going to take. Because I think in another four or five years, we're going to have to have another slight increase. And I think if we give a bigger increase now, we're still going to have to have another increase. That's, so I'm going to, I might support the 30-year on these projects, because they will last 30 years.
Mayor Protim? One of the things I would urge you all to look at, when you can look at page 13, 14, and 15, that's showing that debt over 10, 15, and 20. And, you know, while it seems like a big delta in years, when you look at the year-end requirement, it's not a big difference. 13, 14, and 15. So when you look at on year-to-year, what, what the total debt requirement's going to be, when you're talking 150 to 300,000 dollars, depending on which option you look at. How much, how much of an increase would that require on the, you said $1 was?
$1 on the volume gave us 1.5 million. So to generate that, it would maybe, yeah, 20 cents.
I was actually looking at the same thing that Councilman Enoch was looking at, John, I was going to ask you. It is very surprisingly small difference between the three.
Yes, sir, but, yeah, I was focused more on the total, the bottom, but yes. On an annual basis, the difference between the two are roughly, you know, 500,000 between the 10 and 15 years, well, 500,000 over additional five years, that makes, that makes sense. I mean, the average annual difference is, is, annual basis is not as great as the total, obviously.
Now, when you ran these assumptions, did you use the same interest rate?
I did, yeah, you can, you can tell, page to page is same rates across.
Oh, I see, that's on the coupon. So, and odds are even, even less of a delta, because we'll probably get a better interest rate on the 10 than we will.
Yeah, I mean, the, the rates are going to be the same rates, it's just the, the overall interest rate on the total 10 years is going to be less than a 15 or 20. I mean, we can sell whatever bonds you want to, but I'd sell to you guys.
Okay, counsel, what are we going to do? Carl? Councilman Scott? Okay, 20 years, that's our longest one we've got. Doc?
I would still be inclined to try to be aggressive and pay it off sooner. If, if the consensus is 15 years for the general obligation bonds, and as Councilman Enoch's pointed out, you know, the year-end total is not that different from 20, or 25 to 20, and 20 to 15. Why not set it as a goal to do these at 15 years as well?
Yeah, definitely, the longest I'd want to go on these is 15, I'd almost be inclined to go 10, seeing the delta. Have these, these big, large capital improvements that haven't paid off in 10 years, and, you know, minimal increase on the water bill. That's an opportunity that doesn't come around very often.
I still think we go 20, we got more projects coming in the water plant, I think we got a lot more coming.
It's a pretty significant rate increase if you go to 10, right? It's not a insignificant difference between the, the 10 and the 20, it's, it's a substantial increase in the water rate, correct, Cindy?
It's actually a substantial increase on any of them.
On any of them?
It's a, if I'm doing the math correctly, it's a $2.50 increase on virtually, and that's a, that's a healthy increase.
Councilman Gustaf?
Cindy, what is, this is the average water bill, what would the monthly hit be to the bill at 10, 15, and 20? Do you have that number?
I don't have it right here, I could figure it out pretty quickly.
I'm just trying to understand, is it in the range of $5, $10 a month, or is it a 30-dollar, $40-a-month hit, or?
Cindy or Katina, if you could lay out what the water rates were currently, that might help to see what $2.50 means per thousand.
I can assure you, we got several calls for a $10 adjustment between the last rate ordinance and the one prior to it. Number of calls, if there was a bill that was off $5, we got calls. There are other projects coming down the pike, I mean, we have the, the 42-inch force, not force, I mean, the 42-inch water lines, a 5 to 7 million dollar project. There's a chance the city of Houston may want to back out of the Black Hawk wastewater treatment plant, which is great news for us, because we can get some additional capacity. But that could be a 5 to 7 million dollar purchase right there as well. We have other clarifiers, we have many lift stations that need fixing, and we still have the issue of I and I. As the, we do the study, there are going to be areas of town that we're going to have to do whole-scale sanitary sewer line replacements. So all that will be factored into the utility rates.
Well, it sounds like maybe there's some concerns over cash flow, given some other projects that are sort of limbing off in the distance.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll make a final, or Scott, go ahead.
Well, the other thing I would say is that, you know, water and sewer projects and infrastructure upgrades and all that stuff never go away. So you are always going to be issuing debt and paying water and sewer projects. We've seen that, you know, for as long as we've been here, and that's with every community. So, you know, to try to aggressively pay it off and have a huge, you know, significant tax rate increase on, on your water and sewage, for something that as soon as you get it paid off, you're going to get slammed with something else, to me, just doesn't make a lot of sense. Not when it comes to water and sewage, so I'm for the 20-year.
Well, I, I also think we ought to reserve some debt capacity, which we're going to need in the future. Our capacity is, is related directly to what we pay, how much a month we pay. You know, we can lower the, the debt, but our capacity to pay increases. And then we, we also. And then we, we also, don't forget that, uh, garbage bills go up, it seems, every year. And, uh, that's tied to the bill, the, the citizens care about what they have to pay each month for water, sewer, and garbage. And, uh, I've been here long enough to know, if there's much of an increase, uh, it, it impacts a lot of, a lot of guys. It, it, it impacts on their ability to pay. So, anyway, I, I'm, I'm going to stick with twenty, and Carl, what's your?
I'd prefer fifteen, but, you know, we, we make decisions as a, as a group here.
Okay.
Twenty?
Uh, we got a problem here. We got three fifteens and three twenties. And all I can say is, anybody willing to reconsider? I counted you as a fifteen, I thought, no, a twenty. He said fifteen or twenty, we got a swing vote down there.
Congratulations.
You're the most, you're the most powerful man on council tonight, Carl. I just want to give them direction, I don't want them to be wondering. Go ahead, Doc.
Yeah, I'm not a swing vote on this one. But I will say, I recognize that we're always going to have water and sewer projects, and we're always going to have bond issuances, you know? So, again, the, the more prudent we are to try to pay things off a little bit sooner, gives options to the future council and the future citizens.
Can I, Mr. Mayor, or Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the water and, the water rates currently, if I'm reading our website correctly, uh, for the volume metric are two ninety per thousand from three thousand to ten thousand gallons, three fifteen per thousand for the next fifteen thousand, above twenty-five thousand, three dollars and forty cents. So, if you're talking a dollar per one point five million, we're talking two dollars and fifty cents added to that. So, that is a, it's a very large. It's a substantial increase, it would appear to me, if I'm, unless I'm doing the math incorrectly.
And the, the other thing, again, that, that I mentioned about the GO bonds, is when the, when the rates are low, it's, is when it makes more sense to extend it out. If we were facing, you know, ten or twelve percent interest rates or something like that, certainly, your hands are tied, and you got to get it paid off as quick as you can, because the interest is just going to beat you up. But I think, you know, with rates where they are now, it would, i- if ever there was a time to slow play and push it off, now would be the time to do it. You wouldn't want to do this if interest rates were high, I agree with you a hundred percent on that. So, you know, it's, it's going to be a significant impact to the citizens, but it's something that has to get done, and I think if you can minimize it, you minimize it. And with rates where they are now, I think now's the, the one time that you would want to, want to take that chance. And so, well, I think, I think it's prudent to, to extend it out, given the rates.
How soon do we need to know on this? Wait till there's a number of counties.
Sooner the better, we, I was supposed to bring the results of sale back to you tonight originally, but right now, if you look at the last page, it's on the board here. We're scheduled to sell the bonds, uh, and bring the results to you on Monday, February first. I would need to know, prior to the rating calls, the first of the year, uh, what structure you'd have, what to use. So, exactly, we got to discuss that, the staff and I have to discuss with the rating companies, the structure, how you're going to pay it, what the revenues look like, and, and what the rates will.
Well, being, I am not, uh, actually a type of, you've made no decision. So, I was considering table, until the mayor would be back at the next meeting.
Well, it's just a, it's just a question.
I know, yeah, okay.
May I ask, there's no actually vote here.
Okay.
We're just giving advice. Um, so we don't have to worry about the three-three meaning one thing or another.
Okay, well, then we narrowed it down to two options.
Well, what we do need to know, what John needs to know, it really is the length of the bonds that you want to issue, because he's going to develop the, he's going to develop the, uh, the official statement, that's going to go out, get the pricing, and they can't do that unless they know the amount and the length.
All I can tell you, we've narrowed it to fifteen or twenty.
We could do seventeen.
Let me try this with y'all. So, if you look at the, at what we're saving by refinancing the current two thousand and six bonds, that's a, pretty close to the delta between the twenty and the fifteen. So, basically, we're taking that savings, and instead of dropping rates, we're, we're putting it towards paying off the debt sooner. And it should be pretty close to a, a net wash.
Uh, the table on page four, the comparison of debt structures, from last month to this month, I thought that was a very nice bit of homework, to boil it all down for us. Maybe, Roger, since we're having a tough time trying to decide on the water and sewer, if we had a table like this that would really lay it out for the council, all right, here's your total debt service, and here's the impact to the, the tax rate and, and the volume overage, like we talked about before. Maybe that would, could, remember last month, we were trying to calculate things on the fly, and it just really wasn't accurate compared to what you have put down today? Or maybe that can be done between meetings, and we would have a consensus between meetings.
John, is, there are two separate issuances.
Yes.
So, is there any requirement to, to do them at the same time?
No, there's not, we can push the water and sewer off another month if we want to, we can do the GO.
If we've got consensus on the tax side, on the GO side. I'm, now, now, right, now I'm furrowing Murad's brow over there.
We had a meeting with the Black Hawk wastewater, uh, participants this past week. Um, the city of Houston has promised us to make a decision with regard to the third clarifier by the, uh, by January. Assuming all goes well, TCQ still plays nice, um, we'll be fine, but I, there's no guarantee. As you know, they've put us on notice that we're in violation, we need to have something done at the plant to address the wet weather flows. Um, so, realistically, February is our deadline, we've already pushed it out another month, we can try to continue to push it out, but we need a decision on the water sewer side to, so that we can issue that debt.
But, but we're not, we're gonna go, we're gonna do the debt, it is a matter of the timing. So, as far as the ci, as far as the TCQ, which has an abatement order, they just want to know we're going to do something, we are.
Correct, the, the only problem is that, um, Gulf Coast Waste Disposal Authority will not execute a construction contract for that third clarifier until, uh, we sign, uh, authorization for expenditure, agreeing to pay it. And typically, we don't want to sign that without having the funding in place, but, I mean, we can, I can check with legal to.
But we have a three-three, we can't give you direction over the fifteen or twenty, no one's changed their mind.
Sure.
And what's been offered is, give us something that's a little more analytical, instead of, no, no offense to Roger pulling it up and doing it in his head and all that, but that tells us exactly what's going to happen to water rates, and then I'm sure we'll get through it.
You, it's going to be hard to explain to citizens how their water bill going up is saving them money. They're not going to, and it's going to go up for fifteen years.
And, and to throw another wrench in this, is that the rate study is in progress right now. She started on it, um, September, um, and with the information that we've given her, we, she, we assume that she's used twenty, twenty-five, and maybe thirty-year debt and analysis. If we're going to shorten it, then we need to let her know, because it's not just a matter of tweaking a number, it's, there's a lot more involved with it. So, that's throwing another piece into it. She's scheduled to come to bring the rates, the first meeting in January, the meeting, the January meeting. So, we would want to give her direction if we're going to shorten the life, so that she can modify the work she's done.
I, I'm probably prone to changing my mind smack dab here in the middle of the meeting. If I just had the impact on an average monthly water bill, and if that's something that can be pulled together in a couple of minutes, I don't know, we could recess and go to the bathroom?
Yeah. How long would it take to get that, Mo? Oh, Katrina.
Two seconds.
We're going to have it right now, okay.
If we were to add two dollars and fifty cents to our current rate, average, average utility customer uses about twenty thousand gallons on a bi-monthly billing. So, on the water side, that would be about fifty dollars. It would, it would go from about eighty-nine dollars to about a hundred and, and thirty-nine dollars.
Okay, so, that's the difference between fifteen and twenty years. I changed my vote.
Well, that's it, you got your answer. Let's move on.
So, fifteen-year on the GO, twenty-year on the water and sewer.
Yes, sir.
Can I point one thing out real quick before I step away?
Brief, very.
I was going to say, I'm, I'm, y'all are doing a great job. The, the bond program was for twenty-five years, and the last two bond issues, you've issued for less than twenty, so you're actually saving the city money by shorting it, so. Y'all are being very fiscally responsible, it's great. Thank you all.
Okay, we're still on item five. Uh, item B is the sales tax election in May, Roger.
Counsel, may I recall, we've had numerous discussions over the last year or so regarding a possible sales tax election. We have approximately half a penny left to the, or approximately, exactly half a penny left on the rate, from seven and three-quarters to eight and a quarter. It was originally going to be considered for an election this past November, but was postponed due to the legislature's change in, uh, their regulation to allow us to apply the full half-cent to a variety of, um, options, save and accept, I believe it was the municipal development district.
House Bill one fifty-seven was the legislation that changed that there used to be a, a limitation on the amount that could be used for street maintenance, uh, to an eighth of a cent, or a quarter, quarter cent. And that limitation's been increased or lifted, uh, so that if you chose, you could, uh, if you chose to use it all for street maintenance, you could use, or take that item to the, to the voters who are using the entire half-cent for street maintenance.
Well, in the interest of saving time, uh, we discussed this at length before, um, does anybody have any other wishes other than to use it for street repair? Councilman Gustafson?
I would like to see a portion of it used, uh, to, to fund, um, economic development activities, to help enhance the sales tax revenue that we are getting.
Councilman Scott?
I mean, I think, I, I think that the, the best use of the sales tax is for roads. Because it's, I mean, our roads are, are beat up by citizens that don't live in our community, right? I mean, passers-through and, and all that other stuff. So, if you can get somebody else to split the cost of your road maintenance with you, then I think it's a, it's a no-brainer. On our, on our material, though, I, I wanted, it, it's laid out for a quarter cent for streets, eighth for municipal development district, and an eighth for fire control prevention and EMS. What is the municipal development district? Is that just fancy for economic development?
It is, if you may recall, there was a discussion for that, or a type, uh, type-two, uh, four-B sales tax. Um, the concern there was that the board of directors for that, uh, corporation would not be made solely up of council members, so the municipal development district was the option that allowed y'all to appoint yourselves as that board of directors.
And then the, the fire control prevention and EMS services, how much, what, what would that revenue be spent on for, for those services?
It could be used.
What would it be used for? Give me some.
And we had just thrown that out there, is because it was one of the items that was discussed, uh, by council, to help offset the costs that were increasing associated with fire and EMS services. But it could be used for, I believe, capital purchases, um, associated with their, their service. It could be used for some, uh, ongoing operational budgets associated with fire and EMS service.
Well, I am certainly not in favor of, of the, uh, the municipal development district. I could be persuaded on the, on the fire and EMS stuff, uh, but without a doubt, the majority of the stuff, she needs, needs to go to roads. I don't think there's any, any question about that, so, if I had a vote, I'd say all for roads.
Thank you, John.
Well, I guess I do have a vote, so.
Does the, uh, for the municipal development district, we have to form that kind of oversight committee?
Correct, and that could be made up of all council members.
And for the fire EMS, does that also, I forget if that also requires some sort of committee?
It does not, and I believe it's in the backup material, there's a, a chart, hold on, I'm opening it right now.
Yeah, it does have one, but it's also all seven members, council members.
Thank you.
You know, I, I thought that we went over this, uh, time and time again, and kind of came up with this formula to divide it out this way, so I'm inclined to just, you know, we discussed it and discussed it, let's just move forward as we.
Let's move forward quickly, Councilman.
I do. Um, Billy and I went down and watched the debate in League City. League City put their entire one toward municipal development, and it did not pass. And there were, and there were good arguments, is why it did not pass, and, uh, the people that argued against it. Uh, I think that, uh, I think we need to define this for streets, I'm with Councilman Scott, uh, and, and leave it at that. That will free up, uh, budget that we currently use on streets for us to decide what to use it on. And I think we fund, uh, our EMS and fire department well already, I don't see the need for this. So, I'm, I'm, I'm not for this unless it's a hundred percent for streets.
I'm in the same light, and my four years on council, we've been behind on streets. We've done, made some great strides trying to catch up, but it's our five years on council. And, um, and, but as we're saying today, we're still not there, we're still not there. One of the core things we have to do as a city is provide good, solid streets. And until we're there, I think we need to do all we can to get it there. And then once we get there, and then we can start looking at other options of how we utilize this. But until then, we've got to get to, and as you've said, Brad, many times, you've, you've advised us, if we don't take care of it now, it's only going to get worse, and it's only going to get more expensive to get it to where it needs to be.
Yeah, one, one, one quick question. So, on some of the, the sales tax, sack, sales tax items, had to go back out every four years, is that correct? If we, in streets, is that one? So, in four years, if you get a million and a half in sales tax revenue, and you're not happy with, with the, the, you know, the roads and the way it's being spent, then you vote it down four years later. So, I, that's another incentive for me to, to go with the roads.
Councilman Gustafson?
All right, I, I think whatever, the, if, assuming this is done, and it's voted, it's put out for a vote, there's, there needs to be, there should be projects associated with what you're doing, with it similar to what you would do for a bond issue. None of that's happened, not, not with the roads, not with the fire department. At least with the economic development, there is a, a groundswell of support, uh, in spite of what's been set up here before by others. But there, there is a large group of people that does want this, that are developing these projects, um, and if, if we're not, you know, if we're going to do the streets with, we're going to agree to, to fund street projects with no projects to fund, um, I, I, I don't know, I, it, it. Councilman McGinnis, I think, said it best, we've discussed this, and discussed this, and discussed this, and this is what we agreed to, and we're changing it at the eleventh hour.
We're, we're not changing, this can only be used for street repairs, is that correct? And we have a full, we have a full list of repairs. Also, I will point out that tonight, we're, we're going to, uh, spend last year's budget for street repair, this year's budget for street repairs, just to get the bond projects done.
Yeah, just one, one last point, yeah, in my time up here, I've seen an agenda item that suggested that we develop a citizens group to look, uh, to, to, for streets and drainage, much like what we had for parks up until recently, uh, what we have for CDC, what we have for P and Z, to help establish just what these projects are. And it wasn't just for streets and maintenance, I think the purpose of that group would have also been to look at log jams within the city, and where road projects need to be done. We wholeheartedly shot that down. Um, there, there was, uh, another item regarding this type of street work that came up, which I thought was an excellent one, to establish an inspection. was an excellent idea, to establish an inspection program so that you, you know, with annual service. I think the mistake in what they did is they came up and tried to fund this five-year survey all in one shot. If they'd gone about it and done it in annual pieces at fifteen grand a piece, it wouldn't have been a big deal. But we shot that down. And now we're wanting to flow the sales tax to pay for whatever.
I think the vote's gonna be five-one on this, or so.
I think it's gonna be. Yeah, but.
And.
May I make one comment?
Quickly.
Yes, I will. Streets include sidewalks and anything in the easement. So, so we have a group that's wanting us to do sidewalks in downtown Friendswood. We passed this thing, we can use that money for sidewalks.
Yeah, but there's a lot more needs to be done than sidewalks.
Agreed, 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 but I'm just saying.
Okay, well, I think what we're trying to do decide now is what it would be spent on, and then y'all will come back with a.
We will bring this item back to you in January, ultimately, February nineteenth, I believe, is the date that we'd have to, before that date to call it, pass an ordinance calling an election in May.
Thank you, Mo.
So I think the consensus is roads, right?
Right.
All have sent.
All have sent for roads. Okay, item C. Discussion regarding the permitted use table relative to retail uses, and Councilman Rocky put this on.
Yeah, can I explain?
Sure.
Okay. What this is, is a request that we ask planning and zoning to look at putting an S U P across the whole city regardless of the current zoning for any, any commercial things where a single tenant needs more than a hundred thousand square feet. Okay? I probably read twenty different references on this. This is, this is, a lot of cities have gone this way. What this does is it allows anybody wants to build basically a big box store to have to come back to council. It's not proposing that we ban them. It's giving future councils, future P&amp;Cs, an opportunity to, to, to bring these forward if they need to. So what I'm asking tonight is that we, that we give P&amp;Z instructions to look at drafting an ordinance along these lines. I put a couple of other things in there to possibly consider, and come back with us, to us with an ordinance language and with their opinion of this. So they may draft it and then come back and say they don't think it's a good idea, or they do think it's a good idea. So that's what this is about.
So is this from the fallout of the last P&amp;Z workshop where they wanted to?
No.
Is this a, okay.
I've been working on this month. It, it's a fallout from when a year ago, we approved changing a piece of property zoning with somebody that stood right up there and told us they were gonna put between five and twenty commercial buildings on it, and the next thing we heard, they were looking at one building, one large big box store. Okay, after we had already rezoned it and, and, and our hands were tied at that point. And so there's no reason for us to tie our hands. There's, there's a, give ourselves, give future councils a tool to continue to be able to deal with this.
I don't think you can proactively rezon all vacant land an S U P. It has to be done on request, is that correct, Mo? And my only thoughts is, we, I don't know how you get people to tell the truth. You know, that's what it boils down to.
I'm not gonna take a stab at the latter comment. This wouldn't necessarily require that proactively, every property, commercial property is zoned with an S U P. This would give council the opportunity of having those desired uses come before you in an S U P format. We can proactively rezon any property that council so chooses. We are, we're currently capable to, capable of doing that. That's one of the city's police powers. However, this will not address anything that would be considered vested in any way, shape, or form. So if there is a project out there that is vested, then these rules would not apply to them.
Okay. Anybody else have comments? I've got one more comment if nobody else knows.
I, we're not making a decision on this tonight, so I, I really would like to have P&amp;Z look this over and give us their opinion on how they see it.
Some of the items on this are already addressed, such as the drainage issues. They don't need to address that.
I'm, I'm good with that. I, I, I'm sorry, but I just put these down as particulars to the, to planning and zoning, that's all.
I, I would ask also that CDC come back with a comment on this as well.
Right. Okay, is that a consensus that we want CDC and P&amp;Z to take a look at this and bring some recommendations?
Just a clarification, it says across the city, so I'm assuming that's all the commercial zoning districts?
That's, that's what we're asking them to look at, yes.
Okay. And so all retail trade, because our, in the permitted use table, there's a retail trade section, and it, you know, it's broken down into various types of re, like electronic stores, sporting goods stores. So I think we could address it, you know, to the whole section of retail.
Yes, and by the way, there's fifty or more cities that have put something in like this, just the last couple of years. So this is not groundbreaking by any means. Mostly smaller places like us.
And we're limiting this to retail only?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's a request here.
Okay.
Has planning and zoning looked at this already?
Sir?
Yeah, so, yeah, let them look at it and sit and.
Okay. Okay, I think we're ready for capital projects. Patrick?
Evening, counsel. Mayor Per Town. Before us is our monthly capital projects update. Unfortunately, there is no video this week or this month. We're not blowing anything up. We're not, you know, we're not putting up some light towers. You know, hopefully next month, we will be showing you the installation of some buildings. However, that did not occur yet. The first project that we have to, to talk about is, is our library. Our library is continuing to move forward. And with the first slide, there we go. We can see the first piece of steel being erected. So this, it's, it is a little bit of a slow process, but they are starting to, to make, make amends out on the outside. On the inside, this is our meeting room. If you recall, last month, there were, you know, there was insulation, there was ducts coming down from the ceiling, there wasn't sheet rock on the walls. So they are making, are making progress on the inside of the building as well as the, as well as the outside. Our fire stations, we did our construction manager at risk, Juratech, did receive bids on the nineteenth of, of November. We're in the process of evaluating those bids and also doing some, some value engineering to get within our, get within our budget and provide the best product for the volunteer fire department, the city, and our citizens. Lake Friendswood, we are continuing to work on the design. As we talked about, we do plan on having the design complete by the end of the, end of the calendar year. I do wanna make note that there is a, an aerial power line that goes through about in this area right here, between the aerial power line and the water line. The size of our building, which is right here, which includes our restroom facility and a pavilion, does make it a, a bit tight, almost to the point where it's not necessarily advantageous to have one structure, it may be more advantageous to have two structures. Have a restroom facility right here and maybe a pavilion over on the other side, kind of as a dual use, and still have the ability to have our trail go, you know, not through the building, but around the building. Our sports park, we are continuing to make strides out there. This is the area where the previous existing concession stand was. What they're doing right here is in the process of building a stem wall. The next, next slide is the footings for the stem wall are, are erected, and they've actually poured the concrete for the, the wall itself. And you have the steel going into where the actual pad for the concession stand will, will, will sit. One of the things that I, I wanted to, to mention as we're talking sports park and the various things that we are doing out there, I wanted to make mention some of the numerous tasks that our, our staff are actually doing out there. Between engineering and the parks and recreation staff, we, we have completed the parking lot and detention pond design. Mr. Stacy, who works with, directly with James, he has done the irrigation design and is overseeing the actual installation of the irrigation system by parks, primarily personnel and some public works personnel. They will be constructing the infields, the clay infields for it. They will be overseeing the installation of the grass once the irrigation system is down for the outfields. We've installed the water line, we've installed the fire hydrant out there, and we'll, we'll be connecting the irrigation system as well. Later this evening, you'll have two items on the, on the docket. One is for the paving, drainage, and sidewalks out there. And the second one, or the, actually, of three, a second one is to rescind the Encore contract for which the majority of the work that I just described, we're doing in-house. And then the third item is to, regarding our fencing and netting, which we'll discuss later this evening. As you can see, this is our, this is the, one of the two buildings that's gonna be out there. This is the, the cabinet, which will house all of the, the plumbing and the water heaters as it comes through there. And you have your ADA compliant water fountains. And this is what the current concession stand area looks like. As you can tell, there is still some work to do. The tentative schedule, I wouldn't say tentative, the, the more concrete schedule is, the buildings are supposed to be shipped on the twenty-eighth of December. They will be here on the fourth of January with the installation at the two pads, starting on the fifth, and should be complete by the end of that week in January. Our goal and everything that we are working towards is for girls softball to be out there. They plan on starting on the, the fifteenth of January, the mid part of January is to start practices. Our goal and our plan is to have the existing fields ready for them to begin practices and towards the la, towards the mid, the latter part of February for the existing fields to be ready for the girls to play their games out there for the spring season. Yes? The, the new fields, that's what we're talking about in, in, in the February timeframe.
End of February?
Mid, mid to end. As we talk about the, the sidewalks and the paving, just a little bit ahead of the, council agenda item, there's forty-five calendar days to substantial completion, and we've put in there that they need to have the, the sidewalks for the existing fields done by the fifteenth of January. We anticipate, if council approves the item tonight, then that puts them completing with all of the, all of the flat work and the detention pond by the end of January. We do plan on putting down the grass as soon as we've got the irrigation system out. James's crews and our crew is, is, is working diligently to get the irrigation system down. I anticipate the grass to go down before the end of the month or the first part of January. So there's all those components going all, all at one time. We have talked with the Girls Softball Association, and we have been in continued communication with them regarding the fields. The Stevenson Park Bridge, when I came up here last month and we talked a little bit about it, we talked about the, the drainage district approving our permit. One of the things that we did to slow it down slightly is we went back to the bridge manufacturer and asked him to look at the abutments. At no charge, he went and redid the design for the abutments because the actual bridge is less in length than what, what was originally designed for a year and a half ago. They have finished the design, and staff will be meeting later this week to determine exactly how we wanna proceed, whether it go out in two bids or in one bid for the, for the bridge and the, the abutments. The street bond project, another item that will be coming to council later this evening, is regarding to this project. The idea would be, this is, this is Stevenson, one of the four roads. This is the road where they would start, not necessarily at this end of Stevenson, but this is the road that they would potentially start on. The second road that they would do would be Towns. The other two roads are Mary Ann and Winding Way.
Patrick, how far are they going down Spreading Oaks, from McDonald's all the way to Woodlawn, or?
I believe it is from McDonald's down to Woodlawn.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Shadow Bend. It gets really bad the second block.
Yes.
As someone who lives on Shadow Bend, I can attest to that.
I'm sorry.
Whispering Pines Avenue, Friendswood Link, we are continuing to make good strides on there. This right here is the intersection of Verdun and Whispering Pines. As you can tell, the pavement is done, the sidewalks were poured recently. This is the view from in between Verdun and Aubrey, and this is the view between Verdun and Mr. Arturo Machuca's driveway. I do wanna point out right here, you see bars coming up. There will be a retaining wall due to the elevation difference. We have a, a public hearing and a, and an item later this evening to discuss, to discuss the roads and the intersection. What we are planning on, the contractors planning on, is switching the traffic over to the, to the new lanes at the end of this month, the first part of January. Water plants two and seven. This is water plant number two? Seven. I always get that mixed up. I apologize for that. This one is located off of Friendswood Link, closer towards the end of the northern portions of our city. As you can tell, making good progress there. This is number seven. Number two. One would think I could remember, you know, five seconds earlier. But this is a water plant number two. As you may recall, there were some structural issues with the foundation. The contractor did do the recommendation of the, of the specialized geotechnical engineer, and as you can tell, they are starting to lay the, the formwork for the building itself. The last project that I'll talk about, unless you have additional questions, is our lift station three. Lift station three is located on the, on five eighteen, as you're heading towards the, the western reaches of our city. And this is where they are starting the, digging out the wet well for the new lift station itself. Those are the, the projects that I have to show tonight, if, if anybody has any questions. Yes, councilman.
I, I know it's not a bond project, but James, you, you already got that pool resurfaced, huh?
That is correct. We're working on that currently now.
Okay. And Patrick, thank the staff for all the work that they're doing, and, and it really is a cost-saving to the city, and tell them we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's move on to item six, closed executive session. Is there anybody that would like to have a communication with the council before this executive session? Okay. Council will, may convene it to executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code pursuant to section five-five-one dash point oh-seven-one dash consulting with the eternity regarding contemplation litigating arising from settlement of legal action. Wright Realty Industries Limited versus City of Friendswood in section five-five-one point oh-seven-two, preparation regarding real property, parkland development, legal advice, only regarding potential development of real property located within the city of Friendswood. Okay. Attention, we're ready to reconvene? Okay, item number eight on the agenda is a public hearing to receive comments from the public, both oral and written, regarding a proposed resolution declaring encrochements within the Whispering Pines Avenue right of way to be a nuisance per se, and authorizing action to abate and or remove such encrochements. Does anybody wanna speak?
Real quick, Mayor Per Tim Hill, before the items open up to the, those in, in, in the public here this evening. in, in the public here this evening, I just want to give a little background on this. As you know, we've been working on the Whispering Pines, uh, Friendswood Link Road project for a number of months in terms of construction. One of the issues that had been identified during the construction process was the presence of the innermost columns, brick columns at Aubrey and at Verdun when they intersect with, with Whispering Pines. They present somewhat of a visibility concern. When evaluated further, they're determined to be within the right of way. This evening, you have two resolutions before you to address the visibility issues associated with those brick columns and how they should be addressed. Uh, staff has met with the homeowners in the Timberfield Estates subdivision, whom those columns belong to, uh, numerous times over the past several months and as well as twice last week. There is, there may be a consensus tonight, I'm not sure. If the columns remain, uh, in their current form, reduced form or what have you, a license agreement would be needed with the city in order to leave them at their current location. Otherwise, they can be relocated to the, they would need to be relocated to the right of way line and removed altogether. Related to that project, the city has run, uh, the traps with the General Land Office of Texas regarding striping improvements for that section of road to help somewhat with the visibility and help somewhat with the roadway construction and, or the roadway traffic once it's opened up for future use. And we will provide a two-foot buffer shoulder lane on the outermost lane adjacent to Timberfield Estates.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody like to speak? Would you give your name and, but not your, necessarily your address?
Okay. Hi, y'all. My name is, uh, TJ Gonzalez. I'm a, uh, resident at Timberfield Estates. Uh, just wanted to briefly talk, uh, to you guys. Just wanted, before y'all make a decision about the, the columns, uh, we do understand that they are, uh, basically a safety concern. They are a sight visibility issue, uh, but they are also, um, a way to, to be able to see, uh, to establish our neighborhood and we do not want to see them gone. Uh, for the most part, we would like, uh, to try to, basically what we need is more time. Uh, we kind of just saw this license, uh, the liability, uh, uh, agreement. And, uh, what we'd like to see done is to go ahead and, and chop, to, to bring them down to heights where the visibility is clear and it's not going to pose any, uh, danger to, to us leaving. And then, uh, give us some time to have our lawyers review over the agreement and to see if we can come to a consensus on that. We, uh, there, obviously we've gone through other concerns that we have when you pull out because of the road, uh, did, is closer to Timberfield Estates, uh, about a couple of options that we'd like and that look like they may be addressed, uh, as far as a little buffer area for the striping. Um, and we'd also ask about dropping the speed limit from 30 miles an hour to a lower mile an hour because, uh, to help with braking and that kind of a blind area, even though we'll chop down the columns and you'll have that buffer zone. We feel like it's, it's so close, uh, that it's actually four or five feet away from the, the curb, uh, that it, it'll allow us to give more time for us, for them to stop and for us to, to not have an accident in that area. So anyway, as a, um, what I'd like for you to take in consideration is just basically giving us more time, but still allowing it to be, uh, uh, safe there, uh, by chopping off the columns, uh, to, um, a level that will be able to be visible there and allowing us to go through the, the agreement and see if that's something that, uh, we can agree to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
And I just, I guess I just have a couple of questions. When the road was veered over the seven foot, did, did, were y'all instructed that, that it was going to be a hindrance to the exiting of, from our neighborhood or did we all find out about it when we found out about it? Has it been on the agenda for, for years or did we all find out about it at the same time? Did the engineers keep it from all of us or when they moved the road over seven foot and almost cut right through our entrance of our neighborhood, did you already know about that? I mean, I just found out about it on Saturday for this meeting on Monday. And I just, I thought that'd be a good question to ask.
The principal purpose, Mayor and Council for this is to receive public comments from any of those members of the public that are interested, uh, in the proposed resolutions under the council agenda tonight. You're not in a position to answer these questions as we, as we sit here?
I don't think we're allowed to have a dialect with you.
So, okay, so y'all, I would take that maybe someone did know about it ahead of time.
Well, you could, uh, contact the city manager, uh, and he could give you all the information.
Okay. And then maybe, uh, the question I'd have is, uh, a meeting like this, it's probably very hard, especially during Christmas time, to round up residents of our neighborhood. And I got my letter, or from this meeting on Saturday through the mail. So I didn't know if there's any type, Mr. Attorney, you might be able to tell us, is there any type of legal notice on how much you have to give us notice other than, uh, Saturday for a Monday meeting?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Not for this type of public hearing?
Not for this type.
If this were a zone change or something of that nature, yes, there are laws that require that there should be a certain minimum amount of advance notice. Uh, but this was a courtesy that was extended by the city for the purposes of this public hearing.
Okay, I just, you know, it's just for me, it's kind of odd that the road moved over and then all of a sudden, there's probably several subdivisions that's going to affect. I mean, but right now, we're the very first one. And we do have the, the brick columns, which are very, look very nice. Uh, and they've been there for 30 years. They haven't been built in the last few, they've been there for 30 years. So you just kind of have to question, when the road was moved over, did someone not let someone know that, hey, these subdivisions are all going to be affected by this move? Uh, I talked to someone today and he said, the move, the move, the, the seven foot move over was monetary reasons. I said, uh, 'cause I, I know that y'all have land on the other side of the street and eventually it's supposed to be a more roadway. I think it's eventually supposed to be a four-lane road. And I just was asking him, I said, did anyone know? I mean, 'cause I think, it's just hard for me to imagine that you'd make that decision knowing that it's going to affect four or five big neighborhoods right there in Friendswood. So that's just my question. And y'all evidently can't answer it tonight.
You talk to the city manager.
Okay. Can he answer it?
Uh, probably after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Jack. Okay, so we will close the public hearing and move on to, uh, item nine, communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meeting Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct them to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen comment period. Uh, David Allen?
I think you may know it real quick. You've got three minutes. I'll give you the yellow card. We have one minute left for the red card.
Thank you. Uh, in, in a comment on the gentleman's last comment, uh, I live near Melody Lane and there was advertisement, I believe, well, it certainly was up there while the road was being rebuilt and it was a blacktop with the two big ditches on either side. And one of the problems was people, you know, people with their dogs, people with their bicycles would be on that. You'd be wanting to do the speed limit of 40 miles an hour and it was almost impossible. And then the, the nice concrete road got put in, you know, the guy, kind with plenty of rebar so it doesn't buckle and stuff like that. And it was my assumption, and you know the word assume, what it does to you and me. Uh, and so I assumed that they were going to fill in those ditches, as they often do when they change one of those ditch roads into a nice concrete road, and, uh, put sidewalks in. Well, they built this, you know, million dollar road revamp and a few little places they filled in the ditch and a few little places they put in sidewalks. But I still drive there today, you know, it's a mile long road or two miles actually, and people are in the streets with their dogs and their bicycles and it's the same darn problem we had before. That's because I thought that it was planned better. So the answer is, and that's one of the reasons I come to these meetings more now. You know, you hear stuff, it's, it's announced, you know, it's spoken publicly, you've got places like this where we can talk about it. And that's the time to figure it out beforehand. So, uh, not just when you get a legal notice, it's our meeting, it's the public's meeting, it's our town's meeting. And not everybody can tell everybody everything, but if you come here, you'll hear just about everything. Uh, well, what I, what I was speaking about was I read in the paper a couple of months ago that the administration is going to, okay, first of all, back last year or the year before, we had an anti-Nimbyism requirement because the city had taken some money for a road. And you know, that's kind of funny. It's, okay, don't use your First Amendment to speak against something that's going on in the community that's not good for you or your neighborhood. Nimby meaning not in my backyard. So this is an anti-Nimbyism federally required, thank you, uh, me, uh, uh, Councilman Rocky, the federally required the city to take, waste their time and money giving classes, telling you, don't use your First Amendment. That's crazy. In fact, if we had a, a strong republic here, we should go find out who was writing that and a lot of other cities should, who's ever taking the federal grant money and saying, who wrote that? Because they took a note to support and defend the Constitution and they're making us all waste our money against doing that. But anyway, so just, my suggestion is because they're going to be locating section eights all over, it says, throughout affluent neighborhoods, if we take federal grant money, we really need to talk to the people ahead of time because that's the kind of stuff that's going to be lowering their property values. And so I, I would request you consider that the next time before, it, it may not just be a silly thing like the anti-Nimbyism, it may be serious degradation of the city in various ways. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move now to item number 10, the city manager's report. Roger?
Thank you, sir. Very quickly, uh, have several items I wanted to brief you on. First of all, our Tyler software implementation. Our conversion, uh, and implementation of that software began in July of 2014 and was projected to take 18 to 24 months. While some aspects of it are going to take longer than that, we are still on schedule and the project overall is still on track to be completed within that timeframe. I wanted to give you a brief status update, some of the various pieces of it. The municipal court conversions is complete and that system is up and operational. The general ledger system went live mid-September. The accounts payable system is also up and running. Utility billing went live the first of this month with the first billing this week, this last week. Uh, the utility credit card payment system was switched to a new service provider. It's up and integrated with the new software. The ability to take payments online is expected to be live the latter part of December. Payroll, uh, we had hoped to begin in January, but that's, uh, expected to go live in March. Community development products are expected to go live also in the March-April timeframe. And finally, the work on the imaging, the integration, uh, content management for all the products is expected to start in February. It has been, uh, I can assure you, a very painful process and I want to, uh, thank Cindy Edge and all of the administrative staff for their efforts thus far, for, uh, working hard and long and, and most days still trying to smile. So I really do appreciate their, their efforts. Uh, fall haul occurred last week and we had a record attendance at this year. This year's event was 744 cars and trucks coming through the gates. Progressive Waste Solutions hauled away almost 47 tons of compacted waste, 38.7 tons of roll-off waste and four and a quarter tons of metal box waste. TriStar document shredding, uh, was sponsored by JSC Federal Credit Union and they reduced 8,000 pounds of paper to mere shreds. The garage sale was also a success, bringing in a little over more, little more than $1,100. Those proceeds going, uh, toward beautification projects for the city facilities and parks. We are in the holiday season and have several, uh, things wanted to mention. This year, Keep Friends with Beautiful is adding a new event. They're encouraging businesses to decorate for the holidays so that everyone can enjoy the festive look of downtown before and after the night of the Christmas parade and Santa in the Park. And they're going to actually do some judging on that and it will take place, uh, December actually is ongoing, December 4th through 8th, with winters being announced during the evening program at Santa in the Park, December 12th at 7:00 PM. And mentioning seven and Santa in the Park, this year's Santa in the Park events coordinated by KFB and the city of Friendswood be held this coming Saturday from 3:00 to 8:00 in Stevenson Park. And again, is sponsored by Hometown Bank of Friendswood. Those that have attended it know that it's a great event, live musical entertainment, photos with Santa and Mrs. Claus, 40,000 pounds of snow creating a hillslide, carnival rides, a petting zoo and a holiday market, followed with the lighting of the Christmas tree. Uh, and we showed you last year, the fireworks display that, uh, was synchronized with Christmas music that we videoed or the company videoed with the drone and that will be done again this year. So admission to the, to the park and live entertainment is free. They are selling wristbands for the amusement rides and snow hills and those kinds of slate, those kinds of things. Uh, last call for brick pavers at the library. They're still available for purchase through the end of December. All the bricks will be placed throughout the new main courtyard or children's courtyard. The cost for a paver is a hundred dollars and is tax deductible and those proceeds go to benefit the Friendswood Public Library. So got just a few more weeks to get, uh, your name engraved and placed in the library there. And lastly, uh, we have received written confirmation from FEMA approving the city's 2015 hazard mitigation plan. The city of Friendswood actually submitted the very first mitigation plan in the entire state in 2003 and the city's second plan received FEMA approval in 2009. The plans are required to be reviewed and updated on a five-year cycle. So we were at that time again. The city's mitigation plan addresses a number of different types of hazards specifically related to hurricane wind and storm surge, tornadoes, droughts, severe thunderstorm hail and lightning events, flood, winter storms, subsidence and hazardous, hazardous materials. By having, not only is it important to have the plan to understand what you're trying to mitigate against, but by having the plan, the city is eligible to apply for financial assistance through grant programs to repair, replace damaged infrastructure and city facilities. We also must have an approved mitigation plan to be eligible for reimbursement of the cost for debris removal in response expenses in a declared major disaster or emergency. And we just had the tornado. It, uh, has been declared federally, state and federally declared, uh, from an individual assistance side. We're still waiting to see if it's going to get, get, get declared for the public assistance. And that's where, what we need to have happen to get a portion of our money returned to us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Roger. Uh, and I want to thank the staff, Frank and, uh, emergency management guys, uh, 'cause there was some difficulty getting this, this done this year. And, uh, they went the extra mile and it's, it'll save these, the citizens quite a bit of money. Item number 11, discussion and possible action regarding disposition of RFP number 2015-18 for installation of new roof at city hall. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Rocky has the motion and Councilman says the second. Uh, discussion?
Yeah.
James?
Okay. Uh, good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Council. Uh, this item that you have before you is the, uh, roof bed. Uh, we went out for proposals for the roof bed and we opened those on November 30th. Uh, this was our second time around. As you recall, the first time we bid the project, we, um, actually, um, denied all bids and went out for rebid the second time around. Uh, we were successful in having two bidders bid the, uh, the roof project, PRC and Bronze Roofing. Both bidders bid the exact same material and, uh, this is going to be the same, uh, process that's going to be, that for installing the roof. Uh, the only difference here is the pricing. And so, uh, PRC, uh, was the lowest successful bidder at 175 and Bronze, uh, was at 236.
Any questions?
Refresh my memory, but last, were these, either of these on the first round of bids? Ron was?
Ron was. PRC was not.
So the company that stirred up the pot about what we did, didn't even bid this time?
Uh, they bid, but they, uh, they actually submitted a bid, but it was not done according to the bid rules.
Okay.
So their bid was disqualified.
Okay, we're going to, uh, approve the RFP. The staff recommended to, uh, PRC Company for 175, $689, is that correct? Is that what we're going to vote on tonight, guys? That's the motion? If there's no other cussing, uh, all those in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Item number 12, discussion and possible action regarding disposition of bid number 2015-19 for fencing and netting for sports park. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Gustafson have the motion and Councilman Rocky the second. Any discussion?
I hear what James is.
Uh, the item you have before you is netting and fencing for the sports park improvement project. project. We only had two bidders bid this. One bidder only bid at the netting, whereas the second one bid at both the netting and fencing. Because we were unable to successfully compare the two items, staff recommends that we rebid these, deny these bids, and then rebid out a second time. What we'd like to do to make it more compatible would be to go out for two separate bids. The first bid will be for netting only, and then the, the second would be for fencing only. And that way will allow us to get better pricing and also a better comparison.
So what are we voting on?
We'll be voting to reject.
Reject.
The bid.
Correct.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Discussion and possible action regarding disposition of bid number 2015-20 for paving and sidewalks at sports park. Is there a motion?
I'll make a question.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Patrick?
Uh, we recently went out for bids at the same time period. We did the roof and the fencing and netting. For the parking lot, essentially the paving, the sidewalks, and the detention pond, we did a couple of different alternative bids with the idea if the parking lot and the sidewalks came in too high, potentially we would use alternate methods to do the detention pond. Our estimate for all of the work was at $550,000. Utilizing three of the, three of the alternates, the staff recommends an award to tandem services for $482,814.75.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item number 14, discussion and possible action regarding disposition of bid number 2015-17 to construct Mary Ann Drive, West Shadow Bend Avenue, Towns Road, and Winding Road, and authorize the mayor to execute a contract. Is there a motion?
Most approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, is there discussion?
Yes, sir, Council. We have Mr. Brad Matlock with Cobb, Fennelly and Associates. He's the design engineer for the project. This is one of the bond projects that is part of the first, first series of bonds from the 2013 bond election. We originally had at the pre-bid, and also people viewing online, we had, we've 20 different people looking at it, either at the pre-bid or viewing it online. We did receive three qualified bids. The lowest qualified bidder is Eldorado Construction. One of the things that, with, that we were looking at is Eldorado in itself has not done a project of this size monetarily. However, if you look at the, the way the project is broken, broken up, it's an essential, essentially in four different pieces. They easily have done projects of each one of those sizes. Mr. Matlock has worked with them in the past on different projects. We talked with some of the companies that they were subs to, companies that I've worked with, companies that Brad's worked with. They all received very good, very favorable recommendations. We sat down with the contractor, talking about each one of the specific areas. For the most part, these are all in residential areas. You are dealing with homeowners on a regular basis, and sometimes that makes it very challenging for a contractor. During the interview process, we laid all this out, and we talked, we talked with them, and we do feel comfortable in recommending that staff recommends award to them. Couple of different things, because this is the December meeting, we could do a pre-construction conference and issue a notice to proceed in January. However, the contractor is finishing up a project and would not be able to fully staff it until March. If we issued the notice to proceed in March, the contractor would be able to fully staff the project. One of the stipulations that we put on this project is because there are four different pieces, we didn't want four different sections of the city open at one particular time. We did limit it to two, feeling that we didn't want to create a hardship and a monetary drain on us by only having one section at a time. However, we wanted to get the best value for the bang for our buck, per se. So the way, if we were to go with that process of issuing a notice to proceed in March 1st, approximately 30 to 45 days after the notice to proceed, the contractor would also start on Towns Road and be working in those two projects in tandem as we, as we go forward. Now, each road, the time of construction for the entire project is 270 days. Break that out, that's roughly seven, 70 days per road. Shadow Bend may take a little bit longer due to specific challenges with them, but each road would in essence last about between 70 and 90 days.
I have one question. If we wait, if he waits till March to start, he will honor this bid?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. The, the bid would be awarded, and we would start the, we would work on getting the contracts and getting his bonding and all that stuff together. We just wouldn't issue the notice to proceed until March 1st, in which case the clock wouldn't start ticking. However, the contracts would be signed, and he would be honoring his bid. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
One question I have, why were we so off on our budget here? Any, was there a change in scope or?
I wouldn't say that there was necessarily a change in scope. I mean, these are the same four roads that we, that was voted upon back in 2013. I would just say that's, that's the climate that we're in right now. I mean, I, I felt we, we had a good number of people that were bidding the project. There was a lot of interest in there. You know, you look at the, the prices for concrete and the prices for steel, and if Mr. Matlock would, you know, between his experience in other projects that he's bidding, unfortunately, that's kind of where the prices are going.
Anything else? All those in favor? Unanimous. Discussion and action regarding rescinding prior action to award a contract with the Encore Group LLC for construction of softball fields at the sports park.
Most approve.
Second? Any discussion? Carl, did you have the second? Yeah. Okay. No discussion? All those approve? Item number 16, discussion and possible action regarding purchase of new Stevenson Park electronic reader board sign. Do I hear a motion? Second?
Second.
James?
Uh, yes, the current reader board, which is located in front of Stevenson Park, is dated. It's very old. It's beyond repair. There's no tech support available, our parts. The current board is broken now and not working, so we're asking that council partner with KFB and allowing us to purchase a new reader board.
Discussion, Councilman Rocky?
How old is it?
The reader board was installed back in 2002? 2001? Thank you.
No more discussion? All those in favor?
No question. Just to, just to clarify and then, and think, keep, keep Friends with Beautiful, so their, their, KFB's kicking in $10,000 towards this?
That is correct.
And then we'll still be paying 35, or the city will be paying 25?
25.
Thank you, KFB.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Discussion and possible action regarding appointments and reappointments to the Keep Friendswood Beautiful Board. Do I hear a motion?
Most approve.
Second?
Second.
Scott and McGinnis? Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Discussion and possible action regarding naming facilities, Fire Station Number One, Sports Park, and Baker Road Park. And I will make a motion to approve this.
Say.
Thank you. As y'all recall earlier in the year, the mayor appointed an ad hoc committee of Councilman Gustafson, myself, and the mayor. I want to really thank Carl Gustafson for the work he's done on this. He, he has just stepped up to the plate, and, and I have renewed my respect for him. I think we ought to do these one at a time, and the first one will be renaming Fire Station Number One in honor of, of Ken Kemp. And I would like to speak on this one if nobody minds, because I've knew Ken Kemp for 60 years. Kenneth Kemp passed away on July 3rd of 2015. He was born June 14th, 1932, to Melvin John Kemp and Mary Blast Kemp in Locust Township, Columbia County, Pennsylvania. He graduated from Catawissa High School in Catawissa, Pennsylvania in 1950. He attended college in Bloomsburg, Pennsylvania for two years before joining the United States Air Force in 1953, which brought him to Texas. While stationed at Conley Airport in Waco, he went on a blind date and met his wife, Leitha Maples. They were married in 1955 and celebrated 60 years together this year. Kenneth graduated from Baylor University in 1958. Kenneth and Leitha decided to build their homes in Friendswood in 1959, where they same, soon became very active in the community. They joined the First Baptist Church in 1959, where Kenneth served various roles from Sunday school teacher, music director, church treasurer, deacon, and deacon emeritus. Kenneth started volunteering with the Friendswood Vile Department for over 40 years until his retirement. He served as a firefighter, assistant fire chief, EMT, EMS, captain, president, treasurer, and civil defense director for the city. He was elected as alderman, which is to the first city councilman, in 1961, and then elected as the city of Friendswood's second mayor in 1962. In 1965, he worked with many other volunteers to raise money to build the first city hall, which they all built together. He served in the United States Air Force for 35 years, retiring at the rank of lieutenant colonel. I knew Kenneth Kemp for 60 years, and he was my Sunday school teacher in 1959. He did the best he could. But this man, this entire family, but, but led by Kenneth, have served this city in almost any way you can imagine. Kenneth like was one of the starters of the fire department. He was one of the first city councilmen. The EMS, if it wasn't for the Camps, to this day, I don't know what we would do with our EMS, because their daughter still is captain of our EMS. And our city will be grateful to the Camps forever. So I'm pleased to ask you guys to name this building after Ken Kemp.
Mayor Pro Tim, I was just going to clarify one thing, that Fire Station Number One today is next door to us, but the building that we're talking about will be the new headquarters station located on Whittaker Drive, and that's the facility that we're talking about naming.
That will be the new headquarters, and it will be Station One. Do y'all want to go ahead and vote on renaming this fire station now? Or you want to?
Break them out in pieces like that, or?
A motion was for all three, but.
Okay, well, we'll do them all three. Okay, now I'm going to let Councilman Gustafson do the other two.
I, um, this started out for me back at, a little while back when, I believe it was the Memorial Day ceremony. I was talking to my children about a couple of young men who had gone to the same schools that they had gone to and gone to Iraq to fight. And sadly, one was killed in action, and another gentleman was badly, badly wounded, mean. But what bothered me most, I knew this had been 10 years, but I couldn't remember their names. I remembered it when it happened, but I couldn't remember their names. And I just, so I asked around, asked a couple of folks up here on council, couldn't remember the names, went to city manager. I know who you're talking about. I know who would know, and that Chief Weiner. And I got the full story from Chief. I'm gonna, I'm going to read the applications, I guess. What, what's up here is to name the gentleman, young man who was killed was Wesley Canning, Lance Corporal in the United States Marine Corps, killed in Fallujah, Second Battle of Fallujah. Correct, Chief?
Yeah.
And the proposal here is to name the Baker Road, the new Baker Road, sports fields after Wesley Canning. And the sports park where the softball fields are after Corporal Steven Schultz, who's badly wounded, lives back, is, is back in Friendswood, lives here. I, I mean, if you guys don't mind, I'll just read the, the applications. And then Chief Weiner's going to have a few words to say also. Do you think you should, yours might go first, or?
Probably would go faster if I got this done.
Go ahead.
I'm sure that you've had a chance to review your AI forms, so I'm not here to provide information that you already have. I want to provide some additional information that the mayor and, and Councilman Gustafson asked me to look at. So with that, I'll say good evening, and appreciate the opportunity to provide some context to the discussion, because we are talking about naming two city facilities to honor the service of Lance Corporal Wesley Canning, United States Marine Corps, and Corporal Steven Schultz, United States Marine Corps. You know, I spent some time doing some research last weekend, and I was researching their community connections and their military service connections, and it was remarkable, the connections that existed between these two Marines. And I'm sure you'll find the information that I'm going to provide educational, just as I did. Now Wesley lived in Sun Meadow, and Steven in Falcon Ridge, so they're both very close to the two facilities that we're talking about this evening. Both of them attended the schools in the Friendswood Independent School District, and both graduated from Friendswood High School. Wesley graduated in 2002, and Steven graduated in 2003. And I think we all can go back to those days in 2002 and 2003, post 9/11, and we know what was going on. Both of the two Marines were on their second deployment when Wesley was killed on November 10th, 2004, and Steven was severely wounded in April of 2005. Wesley was assigned as an assault amphibian crewman, and Councilman Scott probably knows what those big grain amphibious vehicles look like, but Wesley was assigned to Company D, Second Assault Amphibian Vehicle Battalion, and Steven was assigned as an infantryman with Weapons Company, Third Battalion, Fourth Marines. But both of our Marines are inextricably linked in the Fallujah campaign that began in April 2004 and continued for over a year thereafter. So on April 4th, 2004, this marks the beginning of the first battle of Fallujah, and that was entitled, entitled Operation Vigilant Resolve. This operation was designed to go in and root out the perpetrators who killed the four Blackwater contractors, and in addition to that, they ambushed and killed five US troops shortly thereafter. Most folks don't know that Steven Schultz participated in this operation, and it started on August 4th, 2004, and went for a month, and ended roughly right around May 1st, 2004. There were 27 US troops that were killed in that battle and over 100 wounded. Shortly after, the Marines withdrew from Fallujah, Steven came back to the United States, and it was the end of his first deployment, and he re- And he returned to Twenty-Nine Palms, California, to start training for his second deployment. In intervening months, July through October of 2004, the violence steadily increased in Fallujah. And by the time we neared the early November 2004, the decision was made to go into Fallujah and clear it of insurgents. Unfortunately, they had five months, six months to prepare for us to come back. And so the Second Battle of Fallujah is known as Operation Phantom Fury. And that began on October 7th, 2004, and Wesley was killed in action on November 10th, 2004. The combat phase lasted about six weeks until December 23rd, 2004, where ninety-five US troops were killed, and five hundred and thirty-five were wounded. In fact, Lance Corporal Billy Miller from Pearland was killed on November 15th, 2004. And Staff Sergeant Russell Slay from Humble was also killed in action during this period of time. So the Houston area felt the, felt the pain and felt the loss of soldiers, sailors, and airmen and Marines that were killed in the Fallujah Campaign. As fate would have it, Stephen Schultz and his unit returned to Iraq in January of 2005 to relieve combat units that had assaulted Fallujah back in the early part of November. And it was, as fate would have it, Stephen went back to Fallujah. So Stephen was wounded severely, conducting security and stability operations in and around Fallujah on, excuse me, on April 19th, 2005. So if you would, we just have a small video to show-
The last cigarette before heading out. Search and attack, they call it. The Marines move through the ruins of Fallujah, looking for any gunmen who've not fled or been killed, the most desperate and determined. Tanks rumbling. The Americans were in this neighborhood the day before, but maybe the insurgents trept back overnight. The Marines have been told to comb the mosque for weapons, and as they do, the firing starts. It turns into a firefight. The armored vehicle arrives with more ammunition, because the houses around the mosque are full of fighters. A group of Marines is pinned down on a flat rooftop. We're filming from an armored vehicle on the street below. The heavier weapons fire a barrage at the insurgents. They call it suppressive fire. A Marine has been injured, and his colleagues need to administer first aid and get him out. A stretcher is brought. This is a serious casualty, and it may already be too late. But the rest of the group now needs to get out too, under intense fire. This is the most dangerous engagement India Company's had in Fallujah.
So that should give you just some contact going on, and how closely they were connected community-wise, but how closely they were connected as far as their military service goes.
Thank you, Chief.
Just to round out my remarks, I'd like to point out that we enjoy the freedom and quality of life that we enjoy in our city because of heroes like Lance Corporal Canning and Corporal Schultz. And we, um, it's only fitting that today, while we remember an attack on our country from our parents' generation, that we take the opportunity to honor two young men from our generation who've fought so bravely to ensure our freedom.
Thank you, Carl. Does anybody else have any comments? I'd like to make one briefly. And I told this to Mr. Schultz after I got to know Stephen pretty well, and it was this. I'll say it this way, Wesley Cannon gave all, Stephen Schultz will give forever. Do we have a motion to, can we vote now to rename these three facilities in honor of these fine men?
Did we get a second?
Oh, we had a second, yeah. All those in favor? It's unanimous. It's ironic we're doing this December 7th. Thank you, Carl, again.
Thank you, everybody.
Item nineteen, resolution, consideration and possible action regarding the following. Resolution 2015-26, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Friendswood declaring encroachments within Whispering Pines Avenue right-of-way to be a nuisance per se, and directing city staff to take action to summarily abate such encroachments. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, okay.
So moved.
I'll second it. Dr. McGinnis made the motion, I'll second it. Discussion, Mo?
Yes, sir. This is a continuation of the items that were discussed earlier this evening related to the public hearing. There are two resolutions before you tonight. They're both the same, except two different approaches. The first is that if you were to approve the resolution, staff would move forward and remove the nuisance. That could be remove the columns entirely at the intersection of Whispering Pines and Arbor and Whispering Pines of Verdun, or reducing the height of them. I met once again with the homeowners a few minutes ago out there following the public hearing to answer questions that were raised during the public hearing. I think there's a general consensus among the group that they would like the columns lowered. They're not ready to sign a license agreement, they're still evaluating it. What we could do, for the sake of time, is approve the resolution and lower the columns, and then address the license agreement in the early part of January, mid to late January possibly. There is a question that they had asked, and they didn't mention it up here directly, but they did ask out there is they would like the city to pay for the cost of these adjustments, if council were so inclined.
Any idea what those costs might be?
Lowering the height, I imagine, would be, it's not the expensive part, less than a thousand bucks most likely. The concern's gonna be the wrought iron fence connecting the innermost columns with the second columns. And I don't have the exact cost off the top of my head. I would imagine probably in the five to six thousand range for those wrought iron. Yes, sir.
Councilman Rocky?
Had they not asked who was gonna pay for it?
We would have removed it, we would have removed it, but as far as coming back with something decorative, that would have been an item for discussion at a later date.
So the request is, see if I can understand it, is to lower it by, say, half?
To three feet.
And, and make it look nice. And then in a month or two, we'll evaluate whether, whether we're gonna go lower it the rest of the way, and whether we're gonna have the right agreement with the subdivisions.
Correct. The, doing it this, from this approach, however, puts us somewhat in a predicament in the sense that we may lower it, expend some funds to lower it decoratively, and connect the wrought iron fence, and then if they do decide not to enter into a license agreement, we'll have to go back after the fact and remove the improvements altogether.
So we will have wasted that fairly small expense?
Yes, sir.
And if that's what we want to do, what you just described, how do we vote on these two resolutions?
My recommendation would be to approve the first resolution to remove the nuisance, and the nuisance being the visibility initially. They would still, by lowering the height, it would still leave the improvement within our right-of-way to be addressed with a license agreement at a date in the very near future.
And just want to be clear, so we would amend the first one to be, lower it to three feet?
Yes, sir.
And do the decorative fencing, and then you would ask us to either suspend or not approve the second one?
Correct. If you approve the first one, take no action on the second. Yes, sir.
Gustafson, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the columns have been there in the city's right-of-way for thirty years-
Yes, sir.
-with no licensing agreement.
Correct.
The need for the license agreement now is because we have concerns about the line of sight that we maybe didn't have before.
The concerns were brought to our attention with the line of-
Or just because it's kind of what we're supposed to be doing.
Anything within the right-of-way that's privately owned and maintained requires a license agreement. It's a similar issue to the Boulder discussion we had in the Forest of Friendswood.
Except you got caught that one. I guess I'm willing to have you go ahead and drop it down three feet. He said it's five, you think it's gonna be about four, five thousand dollars to tie the wrought iron back to the column? Are you gonna have to modify something?
We're gonna have to modify it, so I mean, and I'm ballparking it.
You can run down to Home Depot and get, it's gonna have to be-
It's gonna have to be fabricated.
Fabricated.
Yes, sir.
All right, and you're gonna have to do, I guess, four of these things?
Yes, sir.
So you're looking twelve fifty, fifteen hundred?
Fifteen thousand dollars for all of them, yeah.
Fifteen grand a piece for all of them?
Altogether, I'm thinking. But, um-
That seems high. Maybe not, I don't know.
Yes, sir. Okay. Arnold just advised me is that a good suggestion may be to condition this on a certain period of time. So you authorize to condition this action, and I'll defer to Arnold.
But my recommendation is that the council, if the consensus and the vote of the council is to approve this specific resolution, amended so as to remove language calling for the removal of the brick columns, but to simply reduce them in height, that this approval would be conditioned on the city and the property owners entering into a satisfactory license agreement within a stated period of time, such that if that license agreement is not entered into, say, within thirty days or what have you, then this action is rescinded, or of no effect.
And the city is agreeable to that, or their staff is agreeable to that?
Councilman McGinnis?
So the city had something similar like this when we put up new Welcome to Friendswood signs, and we even constructed one, and it was kind of in a sightline. So we had to deconstruct that and put it somewhere else. So I think we've identified this now, because in the new road, it is a hazard. So we have an obligation to mitigate this. Looking at the drawings, I mean, could we just not move those posts in about five feet? Did we discuss that?
We have discussed that with the homeowners. There are four property owners that immediately abut Whispering Pines. They are not in favor of moving those in. Even though the, a good chunk of their front yard is within the right-of-way, historically, they've utilized it as their front yard and do not feel comfortable moving in the columns. They're afraid it'll impact their established trees, they're afraid it'll be a nuisance as they're backing in and out of their driveway, and so they prefer that, rather than the columns be relocated, they remain where they are, just at a lower elevation.
Well, you know, I feel like if they want to work with us to find a mutual solution, I'm great with that. And if it means, as Arnold suggested, making this resolution contingent on that licensing agreement, so we're not wasting time and effort and money to reach the solution, I think that'd be best.
What I would suggest as far as the timeline is maybe forty-five days, which would put us at the, and that's hindering somewhat on our sequencing of construction, but we can find a way to work around it as best as possible.
Somebody want to amend the motion? Do we need to amend the motion?
Yes.
Yes. We need to amend the motion to say, lower the columns down and repair the wrought iron to where it looks acceptable. And they have forty-five days to sign the agreement.
Or come to terms with it.
Or we will take them out.
Yes, sir. What I would suggest is that we maybe not fabricate the decorative wrought iron component until we know whether or not the columns will remain, but we can lower the height for now. So remove the section of wrought iron in between. That way, if they decide that they're not interested in the license agreement, we didn't expend funds for the wrought iron work.
Doc, is your motion, can you amend it?
All right, I'm sorry. Just to be clear, so we're agreeing to, go ahead, at this point, we're agreeing to pay for the- At this point, we're agreeing to pay for the modifier for this engineered wrought iron, I guess?
Assuming-
As part of, as part of doing this, okay. You know, it's been disruptive. I think that, yeah, that's a fair compromise.
Mayor Protem, I would amend my motion. Let's see if I can rephrase everything now. That we would agree to mitigate this by reducing the size of the columns, and then await a licensure agreement with the homeowners, and then decide, and then proceed with redoing the wrought iron.
Correct.
And the time for that licensure agreement would be forty-five days.
To get those issues resolved. Yes, sir.
I'll amend my second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, item number twenty, ordinances. Consideration and possible action regarding the following. A, an ordinance number twenty, T 2015-29. No, we don't have to take action on that.
That would only be necessary if the council voted not to take action under A.
Councilman Rocky? Okay, item A, ordinance number T 2015-29, titled, "Second and Final Reading of an Ordinance, Amending Appendix B, Section Four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Friendswood." Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, this is the one where we combine the parts of rec at KFB. All those in favor? It's unanimous. B, ordinance number T 2015-30, "Second and Final Reading of an Ordinance, Amending the zoning classification for 1100 to 1110 South Friendswood Drive." Do I hear the motion?
Motion approved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. C, ordinance number T 2015-32, "First and Final Reading of an Ordinance Adopting Budget Amendment Two to the Original General Budget of the City of Friendswood, a City for Physical Year 2015 and 16." Do I hear a motion?
Motion, second.
All those in favor? Okay, communications from the mayor and council members, so it'll just be council members tonight. Carl, you got anything?
I'd just like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. I'd like to thank the council, particularly for the vote on the name of the facilities. It's important to me that we did that. And that's it.
Councilman Scott? Councilman McGinnis?
Oh, Merry Christmas! We needed to add a little life to these things, huh?
And a Happy New Year.
And a Happy New Year. Unfortunately, I'm gonna miss the city Christmas party and celebration. It's one of my favorite activities as a council member, so many thanks to all of you on the city staff for all your hard work through the year. And I know that's a wonderful holiday dinner, and Santa visits, and Roger gets his time on stage, so it's a great event. And I was real proud of the council tonight, this honoring our community leaders, Mr. Kemp and our military veterans. So thank you, Jim, thank you, Carl. It's really, really an honor.
Councilman Anna?
I'd like to thank Nick Habeey. He was with the city of Friendswood as an employee for just shy of 10 years. His last day was Friday, and just wish him well in his new endeavors. That's all.
Councilman Rocky?
I just wanted to mention that the Historical Society had their tree lighting ceremony last week, and Santa was there, and I avoided sitting in his lap, but I did whisper Lexus in his ear, so (laugh). Other than that, yes, often we get votes up here that are troublesome, or require a lot, but, you know, but tonight, getting to name those facilities was really just an honor on our part, just absolutely an honor, and I thank you guys for bringing it forward, and I appreciate getting to be a part of it.
Yeah, I want to thank the mayor for being sick.[1732.04][1732.04](Laughter). It's been, it's been a good experience for me to chair this meeting, and I was, I was, thought it went fairly well as far from where I would say it, but anyway, I was, there's not a lot of times that you're really proud to sit up here and serve Friendswood, but tonight was one of my proudest moments, and we did the right thing.
You're a lot less angry.[1761.66][1761.66](Laughter).
He was, wasn't he?
Yeah, I'm just saying.
We didn't have to worry about it.
Not tankers or anything. I mean, it was amazing, it was beautiful.
You wore the mantle.
I'm gonna call Kevin Dunn be sick next month.[1774.04][1774.04](Laughter).
Anyway, everybody have a good Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I'll see everybody at the city party. I guess we get twice as much if Doc's not gonna be there.
That's right.
Okay, we got one more item, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I have to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Approve unanimously. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.